Hi David. We can hear you, you can hear us.
I didn't have tick one.
We're just gonna mute ourselves till we get started. Hey everyone.
I strongly dislike it. I love this. I can do face to face. I don't like this. Interviews on this.
You miss a lot of interactions.
You miss a lot. You miss a lot body language and. But it's good for the public to be able.
Yeah, no.
Get into that part great.
I'm just getting joined to the Zoom meeting really quick.
I'm requesting for the next meeting.
I have this water bottle that like hooks up to an app and it keeps track of how much you drink and it like lights up when you hit your goal.
It's really cool. We haven't seen it like eight or nine meetings at least.
Alright, we can go ahead. Can you guys hear us? Bill and Percy and David comes up? Alright, you can go ahead and get started. Our workshop tonight is to discuss a draft ordinance for performance standards and local licensing requirements for medical marijuana registered caregivers. For those of you on the planning board, I know Bill sent over a few days ago the draft or sort of starting point to start this conversation. I know David responded with some and it's Jessica responded with some, I think just to the council. So I think we have a lot of discussion to bring up here, but just to kind of get us started and just remind ourselves of kind of, I think, what our goals were, or at least my perception of whatever goals are with this document is to first and foremost, provide a mechanism for enforcement, something to rely upon if there are to be any issues in town and prevent, again, please don't edit if you disagree with any of this, but this is my take on it. Preventing large scale growth or retail store like operations in our residential zones. While at the same time not creating any undue stress, financial strain or administrative hoops to jump through, I guess, for caregivers themselves. Essentially, you know, we have caregivers in town who are doing their thing and they're not an issue. We want to make sure that that continues, but we want to be able to prevent some of these, these other types of things.
Again, getting following along with Valerie says the intent of this draft is to provide a starting point. It's not by any means a finished product, but we felt as a council that it would be good to at least pass along something to the planning board in their review. So that it's, it's not a white paper and to act as an aid to focus discussion and to see where it all takes us. I mean, there's going to be public input, there's going to be other types of input that can be had and we're all open to that and it's like I said, it's a starting point for future discussions so that we, last time around, better go back and forth a couple of times between the council and planning board as the, I think it was under the cultivation ordinance and you know, what, what is the direction? What is the, what is the push? So this provides a starting point.
I also am just thinking about, there's a lot, I think, to cover here. There's a lot of us. I think there's a lot of station to be had, so I'd like to kind of just start us if we can. I'm like the licensing portion of things. I sort of think about this in two buckets. We have the licensing and then we have really the performance standard plan use kind of stuff. And so if we could just kind of first start the discussion with anyone jumping in on the licensing portion of this. The only thing that I will say that just gives me pause is I recall from our conversation with Phil, whenever it was a few weeks ago, that we can't request a list of caregivers in town. That's not something that we can do. So any type of licensing that would be implemented would be on a voluntary basis only. And so there are just, I guess, something I just want us, want us to keep in mind is like we can put this ordinance in place and some hope that some caregivers will come out and apply for a license, get the license and stuff, but this is sort of a voluntary type of thing unless there becomes an issue in which we can have our court enforcement, court enforcement court enforcement officer come out and if there are any operating issues, then we can pull the license trigger, I guess I'll call it. That was my understanding of our conversation with Bill. I don't know if anyone disagrees with that, but I, I just, I do feel like some of this is very strong in the licensing side, which I want to be, but I also feel like things like requiring to have a license present in the operation and stuff like just, that just doesn't, to me, I don't, I don't feel like that's gonna fly from a legal standpoint because this has to be voluntary only, so.
But within the absence of an ordinance like this.
But Bill, is this really hard to hear you? Like, can you get closer to your mic or something?
Is that better?
A little bit. I'm gonna turn our volume up.
Go ahead.
It is voluntary in the way that you described because you can't get a lift, but in the absence of town has zero recourse and can't check up on it, can't have any, any, that seems to be zero recourse. They can't, don't have any authority to go check things out to see if a license is required or not. But I think that's a larger part of it. The compliant people are, it's not that big a deal, but the who are, may not be compliant. It does give the town the ability to which I, I don't know that anybody understands what that is right now.
Yeah, Bill, sorry. It's kind of so kind of hard to understand you. Like, it's just kind of.
This all day. I don't know why it's not working now.
Hey Mallory, can I ask a few basic questions? Where did we get the, where did this come from, the draft? Was it lifted from another town? Is it language somebody put together? Did somebody write it?
Oh, one second on that. Which, which one are we going on? The one, the original one that Jack sent or the one David sent? Just to get us all on the same page.
I'm gonna suggest that we all start with Jack's version.
Okay.
And we.
I don't know which version I have then. I have one that I think I downloaded that Amy sent.
That's the, that's the one we're all using. It's the original.
Okay, alright. So can I ask where it, where it came from?
I drafted it and I used the model from Turner Wyndham, kind of did a matchup and that, and I think that's probably why the administrative section of it is a little bit funky and need, need some polishing as the town clerk suggested and I I didn't, I didn't spend a lot of time on that piece. I figured that that, you know, the philosophy I would get through would clean up who gets an application and who reviews it. And that'll come out in, in our discussions with staff and amongst ourselves. So it's a like I said before, Hershey, it's a starting point and it's a compilation of of existing ordinances that are out there and have been functioning for a couple of years now.
Thank you.
Is it, is my thing working better now?
Yes.
Okay, got the right microphone on. Good, thanks.
Percy, did you have multiple questions or did that?
I certainly have comments. That was my one burning question. And I, I, you know, I know Wyndham has done a lot of work and people keep referring to Wyndham. I'm not sure why Wyndham is completely comparable to what we're looking for in terms of intent, but I, you know, we can make of it. It's good to start somewhere, right? So. And I'll say, like, what?
A little more broad than we are. Their, their, their ordinance is kind of over the whole spectrum of marijuana use and that's why I kind of defaulted to Turner and
And I'll say, I'm not sure, can I ask who who else gets licenses in our town besides maybe people who sell liquor? Do we license other people for anything? And then who deals with it? Is it the town clerk or the code, you know, enforcement? Who deals with?
Is the state.
Food is the state.
Food is the state.
Okay, so there's nothing at a local level that we license at all?
It is implemented in the the storefront modifications, we implemented a licensing process that basically just requires like an annual renewal. Much like if you listen in our council meetings, even though the state technically does deal with the liquor license stuff, there is a kind of process in which that comes to point of council on an annual basis and we just kind of say there are many issues, we're all good, let's read the license and we, we more or less implement a similar process for.
So I, I have, I guess my main concerns, and I know we're gonna dig into this, so maybe I can just get that discussion started, but my main concern is who will, and Jack just said this, who will be the enforcer? And I know that Barbara didn't feel like it should be her and I'm not sure I disagree with that at all. I'm also worried about privacy issues in that even if it's voluntary or not, the state for some reason seems very careful about keeping these people private and not giving us a list. And I'm wondering if then that means we should then be able to broadcast who they are ourselves and I don't, I'm not sure I feel good about that or why. I just, I need a little more information about that. And the last thing is, there's a lot of stuff in here that's already covered and is redundant with the zoning ordinance. So anything that's already in the zoning ordinance, you can capture with one sentence that says must comply with the zoning ordinance. Anybody who doesn't is welcome to complain to Joe, I guess, or the licensing body. So also, I, I, I think well, people should have redress in a way to complain and believe me, we sorely need that. I acknowledge that. I also don't think this is a town council matter necessarily. I, I feel like other things get then discussed that aren't really a part of the issues that come before maybe a licensure board or whatever would be dealing with this. And then it also becomes public in a way that I don't think is perhaps legal and might be the reason that OMP doesn't then you know, provide this information. So those are my concerns.
And I think Percy, wherever we land with this, an absolute final step will be to have our lawyers review it and make sure we're, we're good from all legal standpoints with it.
Right. There were, there were a few things in here that I, you can, aren't gonna, we all know will pass scrutiny, right, that we can that the town council at their discretion, there was some sentence that they could add any, you know, requirement they the council shall have discretion to attach any conditions it deems necessary to any license it awards, which I, you know, that's not, that's not fair in any way. So. You know, or I'm not sure it's legal for people to show up and do inspections without a warrant even. I know that in some ways you're, the police certainly can do pop inspections where there's just cause. I'm not sure you're allowed to do that anywhere you want or we're allowed to do that and I'd be a little worried if we were, so I'm not sure that will pass scrutiny either, but you know, I'd love to see the lawyer take a pass at this and give it a good scrub, so.
To kick this off the easiest way, why don't we just pretty much you want to go over licensing first, right? Why don't we just start on page two and go block by block and see who has comments? Because otherwise we're gonna be dumping around everywhere.
I'd like, I'd like to make an overall question first. John, I, I don't understand why this is a 140, is drafted as a 140 ordinance. It has to be an administrative ordinance. This is, this is not land use. There are land use components to it, but the licensing is administrative thing. I don't know that belong, I don't know where it belongs in the code, but I don't believe it's 140. Right now it's drafted as 140673 and I, and the, the performance standards are not a big deal here. This is not a planning board issue, frankly, in my opinion. It's an administrative issue and it belongs someplace else in the code besides 140, in my opinion.
I don't necessarily myself disagree with what Bill just said, you know, some of the comments made by Hershey regarding privacy and and the town attorney, you know, I've listened to the presentation by Phil Sossier and to me it's clear the town has the authority to regulate the registered caregivers essentially as they see that. So I'm, I have less concern about those overall issues. From a land use perspective, I agree with Bill. I'm not so sure this should be in chapter 140. It's more of an administrative code. However, I do think at the end of the day, one is tied to the other. Part of my review, when I was looking at this, also encompassed the other ordinances that were recently passed for cultivation in the medical storefront. And some of the items that stuck out to me is, again, if I were to do a more thorough review, I can point to specifics, but it looks like we're setting up different types of licensing procedures. In other words, there's a lot of good stuff in the draft. I'll call it the draft I just downloaded offline. I think Jack was the one that you drafted. But it seems that there may be some conflicts with the other two ordinances that were drafted for the licensing provisions added to the cultivation, the medical storefront. And so I think that's something we need to be cognizant of. In other words, we already did it over here on these two ordinances. You know, how different do we want it to be over here and how many different processes? And that could be, you know, for the, the enforcer, in this case, the code enforcement officer or for the the authority to review the application, whether that's the town council, which I believe it should be, as opposed to the, the town clerk. My initial suggestion would be to really extract the licensing provisions out of the land use code and create really what amounts to a separate licensing ordinance that addresses all three of all of the uses under a single ordinance. So for example, if you need to make a change in the future for something that were to come up, you're only having to address it through modifying one ordinance as opposed to three separate ones. So I do know a lot of different towns address it from that perspective. And they consolidated everything into a single licensing ordinance. Because at this point, you know, they're broadly defined as marijuana establishments. And we have enough in town. We do the, we have the cultivation capability. We also have the medical storefront. And now we're talking about the, you know, the licensing of the registered caregivers and their activities. So on one hand, I agree with Bill. I'm not sure that it's well placed in chapter 140. It's really more administrative aspect. However, I'm just more concerned about the administration of them when it seems that we, I know we have at least two different versions of licensing, possibly three, because I didn't go back and look at, does this one match this one and so on and so forth. So I would advocate, the good news here is, I don't believe we are, but I don't think we're under a moratorium at this point. So we have time.
Yeah.
And I think to just aggregate everything together and look at what you folks pulled together in the cultivation, in the medical storefront and kind of take that and let a lot of the good work that was done here and just kind of combine them, I think would probably be a good place to start, at least from my perspective. At least it gives some order at the town in terms of how the licenses are reviewed. There's one process for it and we're not shifting back and forth and if we have to make it an amendment to it, you're only making it to one and not the three. So. But I think the two, the three of these could probably be lifted into a single ordinance.
I agree because the language for the storefronts and the life, or storefronts and cultivation was literally like a crappy place to find and replace for the, for the use type. And then we could smush all of those together into one administrative ordinance then is what we're talking about. And we can have a table and there for various fees. I think my only, this is just me, but my only concern with doing what you're proposing is strictly from a fee standpoint. I can't recall off the top of my head what our fees are for the stores and for the population facility. I'm not of the opinion that the fees should be nearly the amount that they are for a store or for a cultivation facility as it is. I don't think that the fee should be as high for the for those two uses. So I think if we could build in something in there where we said caregiver, registered caregiver, retail store, cultivation, just a different fee for.
Mallory, to me the fees don't matter.
Yeah.
For the zoning and enforcement mechanism, if anything, that's out of hand. And so, you know, I think there's two parts to the licensing ordinance. One would be the, the, the wording itself and then the other would be the table of fees.
Yeah.
So that's, again, that's a council issue on what you folks want to charge and there is a significant difference between a registered caregiver and a, the cost for a you know, a cultivation permanent or a store permanent. So, but that's, that's your prerogative as to what you want to do there. But, but for consistency, I think that would probably be the first discussion point would be, do you want to pull them together or do you want to keep them separate? Just you know, if we, if we're gonna talk about this, then we're going down the path of two separate licensing processes. So I think the two could probably be frankly blended together.
I believe the land use pieces is definitely more in some 140 because that's where our land use table is, the appendix B. So it was gonna be a category and lists under appendage B, then it belongs to zoning now. And frankly, the the public comment that I heard and what I feel in 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 my body is the fact that. There is significant risk for. Medical marijuana registered caregiver use, expanding with the forces of the market and all the rest of it. It might be something simple to agree and 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 say, okay, we need to ramp this up. We need neon signs. We need, you know, window mounted signs. We need all these things that don't say residential. Or at the same time, this use occupies a residential zone. That's the danger, in my view. You know, how we do it, as far as, you know, it needs to be someplace where someone has to get a license. And then pursuant to that license, they need to comply with what's going on in those zones, so that it's not on of us. That's, that's the big fish as far as I'm concerned. How we put it in there, I don't give a, it just makes sense to me that it will be listed with every other land use town.
David, I think you underhand that.
Yes, I guess I wanted to to maybe clarify what we were talking about or or make sure that I'm looking at this the same way. As you are, we're talking about registered caregivers who may be. Basically growing and selling or providing service in their homes, correct? Okay, so the, if I recall, the last ordinance that discussed marijuana, it was placed in there that it was going to be. Anything more than three people growing in one place was going to be considered a growing operation that had to go through planning board review. And what I recall was that there was, the, this came out of those discussions being that those wanted to, those. People who are selling or or growing in their homes of medical marijuana, they're licensed through the state out of their homes, most likely. That the town was going to allow them up to a stage where people wanted to be able to have some kind of regulations in place. To, you know, make sure that they don't smell, there's not people showing up the entire time. I guess I would suggest that it would maybe, there should be something in your land use code regulating it. I would suggest as it's, we're talking small operations, that it's almost treated as a home occupation. The person would come in, you have an application if there's a fee attached to that. Or licensing requirement with that, you could do that, but they apply through the code office. The code office looks at it and says, how many people are growing at this location? Do they register? Blah blah blah. He checks it off. And and then if they require licensing, but I, and as it's voluntary. I think most of it's going to rely on enforcement. You know, it's never a problem until there's a lot of people showing up or there's usually odor complaints. So I'd suggest you have sort of regulatory checkoff boxes. It's not a store. It's sort of a home operation, so. And then you you separate licensing from that.
Right, I think there's two separate issues, and I think we all recognize that. There's the land use issue that's been previously identified, and then the licensing issue.
Yeah. I mean, Greg, I like your suggestion of kind of smashing them all together. I think that that keeps us consistent from. Type of business, this, I think it certainly simplifies our conversation here. The only thing with. That I'll just bring up again is like this whole voluntary thing, you know. From what I understood from Phil, if we put it in place, we then would have to wait and see if we had caregivers come to us and say, I'm going to apply for a license. And then in in the event that there was an issue that was reported to the code enforcement officers, then there could be a step to say. You don't have a license, you know, you need a license, and then now then we can take action.
This, this, this is a, a piece, at this juncture, I guess I'm not really seeing any harm. In being, using the word provocative, or or more firm. To see. We've had a lot of stuff pushed on the town itself earlier in the state, and I don't like it. And I don't feel as though we should be timid over maybe this juncture, and I think we should be bold. And push it and see how far we can go as a town, and then back off from that. As opposed to kind of talking ourselves out of something at this point where it's a, you know, it's a, it's a real rough draft, and that's acknowledged. And so I think you just see, see where the chips fall and see what we can do. Because, you know, municipality has been ignored by the state in terms of what can happen to us.
So I'm clear. I'm understanding this as. Like we've said, we've got the retail figured out. We got that in a, in a little box. We've got the the cultivation put in its box. These are not people that are coming into create industry or anything. They're our neighbors, right? These are the people that. Are, in my mind, just, they have a medical condition, and so does Mima, and so does Junior. And they're growing for their medical condition. Let's just say, all honesty.
But they're not. They're growing, they're growing, they're not growing for their family. I can do that living next to you, where there's nothing any of them can do.
Okay.
They're selling it to patients.
Yeah.
That's the big difference. And Maine lifted, we first did this, I don't know how many years ago now, because this is just rolling into one. They could only have seven patients, is how this started with a medical caregiver. Maine went to Unlimited a year ago, so I could service 300 patients if I could grow that much marijuana in my 500 square foot facility. I can do as many patients as I want. I could do Greg today, Jessica tomorrow, Jen the next day. Has nothing to do with family. That's, that's where we get into this.
I think that what needs to be recognized is when someone applies for a registered caregiver certificate or whatever you want to call it. They're applying it with the intention or business related purposes, because there is a business that they're looking to do. As as John said, I could just call myself a caregiver and go grow my own. I don't even, yeah, I could just do it with the adult use. I actually think that this, the solutions here are actually very simple, and I think we we've heard them really here tonight as well. And one is, there seems to be general consensus that licensing is an appropriate use of the authority here in town. And and I think we're working on that, whether or not we combine them into a single or we keep them separate, that would be question number one. Question number two that remains unanswered is that real actual land use piece. And I think David said, and others have said in the past, how do you, what what is the the mechanism? For those folks and how do you regulate them? Again, recognizing the basis of a registered caregiver is to create a business. To me, equals they should then be regulated as a home occupation if they want to operate out of their home. Chapter 140 already contains the necessary definitions and, you know, performance standards for a home based occupation. It's already there. So really, all you're talking about doing at this point is the licensing, figuring out how we want that to. Mesh all of these documents together and then really coming up with the definitions and putting those definitions into chapter 140. And referencing them to, yeah, a a home based occupation, if that's what the the collective thought is to do so. I think you're talking really about a couple definitions, and don't get me wrong, you know. There's going to be different thoughts on what that definition should and should not encompass in terms of limitations on square footage. You know, there's all those things that have to go into that, but you're really talking a a a couple definitions. And the licensing and because the the work is already there. It's already exists in chapter 140. And a lot of, Jack, some of the stuff that you put in here, which is really good. We're probably going to want to have to, we're probably going to need to make some adjustments to the performance standards for a home based occupation. But that's just lifting what you did and putting it over there as another section of the ordinance. I think really, a large portion of the work has been done, and I know this may seem overwhelming from time to time, but I think it's pretty. A lot of stuff has already been done, and I think decisions just need to be made in terms of. The licensing and then how do you want to classify a registered caregiver? You don't have to do a home based occupation. You can be something else that you create. But I think from the planning board perspective, that's what we're going to need to know, or what is it? That you would like us to come up with, either as a planning board separately or collectively in the workshop and. Go from there.
There's a piece to this that's that's quite important, and that is that I I believe that. Rather than going to separate sections of the ordinance for definitions, that all the definitions need to be who all the definitions are. We have that, we ran into it 12 years ago when we. We already had a shoreline ordinance. It was part of our zoning ordinance, but with the state mandate, we were forced to take it out and create. Chapter 110 with another whole list of definitions, and now people are going back and forth between two things, and it's just poor construction. So that's just another piece that the definitions belong where all the definitions are, so that the regional course could something that looks something up.
Right, and 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 I I don't disagree with you, because one of the things we're also going to have to look at is, what are our own definitions of. Registered caregivers or marijuana establishments? I have the ordinances, I read them earlier. I don't remember what they all say, but we need to make sure that our own, we do our own definition check. And make sure that we're not conflicting ourselves. Yeah, so I don't, I'm not. I don't think this is overly difficult. I just think we need to make some decisions on what we want to do. And if we want to do licensing, and I think there's a collective consensus to do that. I don't believe it should be in chapter 140. I'm not going to argue the point. I think that wherever it is, because the planning board really isn't an enforcer of ordinances. We just, you know, we approve the ordinances and projects that are before us based on the ordinances. But whatever, as long as it's in there, I think is the important thing, and so. I'm willing to to help and do whatever needs to be done, so.
That's, that's what I was looking to hear, to be expected, planning board is willing to help out. You know, do the necessary wordsmithing, polishing, and make make a, I don't know, it could be a couple of different suggestions, you know, just and and then we can keep moving ahead and.
So I think if we use Greg's suggestion to pull all the licensing together as one administrative ordinance, but I think the council can take that from from there. Sorry, Bill, go ahead.
No, I'm just agreeing.
Yeah, like I think we can smush them all together. That now becomes administrative ordinance. I can take that too. Kind of draft what that would look like. I probably will need some help from you guys, numbers and where that will fall and the whole thing, but as far as the language goes. And then what that then allows us to do is create a separate kind of effort. For, from a planning perspective around the performance standards and land use and making sure that everything drives from that. I think it's important for us to, I I think however we can. I think we have had a, done a really good job at making things like way overly complicated for ourselves, I think, throughout this journey. So if there's a suggestion to to make this a little bit simpler and more straightforward, I I certainly welcome that. I just want to make sure that things like, like in in your suggestion, Greg, of like, kind of defining this as a home occupation, we are in a performance status for that. The one big thing that I I bring up all the time is the whole thing, like if my husband and my daughter and I are caregivers, and we all decided to grow together, like. I think that's like the type of scenario that we just want to make sure that the, what do they call them, collective.
So responding to that issue, Mallory, that how you would take care of that is in the definition.
Yeah.
The performance standards, well, you can interpret the performance standard many different ways, or what the performance standards actually ought to say. But the power would be in the definition.
And and David speaks to that in his annotation.
Okay.
And I, can I just say, and I I I believe there is a limit, right? It's not, I think someone mentioned at some point, maybe it was John, that, you know, you can just grow as much as you want. That's not entirely true. I think there's a 500 foot. Canopy limit on each grower, right?
Yeah, but if you have, technically, if you had.
Free, free growers, you could draw, grow five, 1500 square feet.
So technically, if I had a family of six.
No, you can't, no, not with six, no, because once you get past three, you're now a cultivation.
Yeah, it's primary residence, which isn't in, which isn't in the cultivation ordinance. So if I'm at my primary residence and I have a family of six, I could technically have 3000 square feet the way it's written.
That was, that was not the intent of the cultivation ordinance. I thought when we went over that, it was really clear that this was to protect small home growers to limit it to three. Period, and that anything over that was going to be, have to go into the parts that were zoned as a cultivation facility.
Correct.
If that's not true, then we should correct the cultivation ordinance.
Is, it is with a collective of myself, Greg, and Jessica, and I'm sorry to throw you into my triangle, but. If the three of us went into it because we are not family members, it would be a cultivation. But I do believe family allows it 500 per family member.
I think, I mean, he was in our cultivation ordinance. There's specifically a phrase that says something, something, something that is not their primary residence. And that's how we're defining cultivation. And so what we're trying to address here is situations where someone is trying to grow in their primary residence. And as it stands right now, we have no rules or anything in place to say that a family of six caregivers couldn't combine together.
Okay, but this is, this is exactly the discussion we had when we passed the cultivation ordinance, and if we didn't get it right, we should fix that. Because nobody wanted to see that. The point was to allow three people and no more than three to grow, no matter where it was. And once they pass that three person threshold or 1500 square feet canopy, they then were forced to be a cultivation facility and have to go in the I one zone. So if we didn't get that right, I say we go back to that and fix it, so.
We need to look into that.
So that is a possibility, but the flip side to that as well is, you need to look at what the outcome would be. And if it's three or more, in the cultivation ordinance or more than three, whatever it was. You need to then say to yourself, okay, what does that mean for the residential zone? What can happen within a residential zone?
Right, they're limited to three.
Right, but but there's no performance standards out there right now or regulations for how those folks operate within the 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 residential zone. It's the same argument for regulating the registered caregivers. It's the same exact argument for that whole adult use. It's all about the zoning. It's the same concept. So they're going to be operating with with no oversight. So the number is one piece, the regulation is another. So there's two parts to the land use code ordinance that needs to be looked at. And if the council has previously stated wants to look at that, then those are the decisions that you would have have to make and. Help us understand what you want us to create for you around that.
I'd just like to, David went ahead and offered a definition. Medical marijuana registered caregiver is a type of home occupation requiring local licensing. It may be up to three registered caregivers operating from the home, providing that there is, that it is their primary year round residence of each caregiver. So we 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 have some suggestive draft language here.
So I think. In our, in our current code, we have a home occupation definition. And then we have a separate registered caregiver definition. That likely either one or both of those will need to be updated as a result of this exercise.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm trying, I'm having trouble finding the performance data for the home occupation section, but. So I, and and to just keep us moving forward, I think the licensing piece we've got covered from kind of a planning exercise. I think it'd be helpful for us to all kind of like rattle through what are the things we want to make sure are addressed as part of that effort. And then, you know, I'll I'll lean. You know, I'll, I'll lean on the planning board as kind of some of my experts and still, how best to make that happen, I guess.
It, it is too bad that we're working from the original draft because. There's a lot in. The, the draft that David put together. That, that makes a lot of sense.
There is, but there's a lot of stuff that has to come out of David's. To, to be brutally honest, we're hand-tapping this and putting what's in there.
But. But the fact is, is that would the planning board be willing to accept the charge of working through that list?
They can, Jack, but to save the planning board trouble. If they're gonna look through David's. We suggest looking through David's after comments from us, because I don't want them spending time agreeing with what he had down here. When I'm, I'm sorry, but it's, it's ridiculous to me, some of these things that are in here. I, I, I just, we don't expect that for any other business. And I go back to. It's a legal business in the state of Maine, so we have to be careful sometimes what we're trying to get. And there's some of the stuff in here I just don't agree with, I don't want them spending time giving us something for us to say. As a board, why, I'm only one voice, but if three of us say we don't like that, I don't want them spending time on. I'd rather give them something saying, we don't like this, we like the rest of this, please proceed full. For best use of their time, they're busy too.
And also, John, to echo that, I'd like to see the attorney review it before we get it as well, that would certainly, I think, cut down on more time for everybody.
That, that's premature version.
I, I, there's stuff in there, Jack, that is clearly not gonna pass muster. So I, you know. Why spend time on it?
Could I? I think there's a, a fairly couple of simple ways of doing this. The town's land use ordinance does have under home occupations, two different stand, or two different levels of home occupation. There's normal home occupation, there's a major home occupation, and there is some standards in there. And I was thinking as far as land use control, why not classify, it's only supposed to be for three people who live in the same household. To have patients and what have you, and then work off that, I, I think a lot of the stuff's in there, and if you guys, if the, the council gives their list. Maybe the, the, that'd be the easiest way for the, the board to look at it, but. That's just a suggestion.
My only concern. I, I reviewed the old, the, the prior draft, so I'm, I'm, I'm not prepared to even comment on Dave's. Suggestions, so I would apologize, I.
No, no, that's, that's a. Moving ahead.
Yeah.
That, that, that'll be, you know, take it as a public comment, these, even, it's a staff comment that, like, I guess. I'm, I'm hearing some reticence from the planning board about taking on this charge, and I, I guess if the planning board doesn't wanna do it. Then I think we need to establish that.
Let, let me jump in there, I, I. I don't, the, the interpretation is, do the administrative things separately, that's my full recommendation, that was my recommendation last July. Deal with licensing as an administrative issue. And that's not a planning board issue, if there's an overlap for performance standards, sure, of course, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with it. But I, we shouldn't be messing around with the administrative issues of licensure, that's not our role, that's an administrative role. And I can't, I've said it five times, I've said it again, if this has to be bifurcated and take the administrative stuff out of it. If you wanna tie it in through home occupation, do that, you wanna do a, a, another small amendment with a, with a, with a. Definition and so forth, fine, but that should not be integrated, in my opinion, with the licensing language per se, and I don't know how else I can say it again.
I'm with Bill.
I, I think we're good on that, Bill, I'm, I'm gonna take as it to do to smush it all together, pull the licensing from the previous two ordinances into one.
And I mean, there's no, there's no reticence of the board doing what it ought to do. I just, I, my, the reticence has been that the administrative parts of it don't belong with the planning board.
Okay, so on a go-forward basis in this conversation, licensing's done, it's an administrative topic, the council's gonna cover it, I'm gonna draft that language. But I do think we need to continue on with the performance standards part of this conversation, which it sounds like the planning board would be happy to help with. As long as we keep the licensing on, but.
Right, and, and also, we have some work to do, it seems because of John's comments with respect to. What we're calling. At least in this draft, approval and operating requirements.
Yeah, by the way, no one got the David's draft on the planning board's side, I don't think.
And then now, Bill, this came in today. And so.
And I actually have a few spare moments, it's the only reason I read it before the meeting.
So we'll. We, we have some work to do on that to iron out what, what, what will, will follow to you.
Okay, good, thanks.
So, does the council, do we have a list of things that we for sure want to make sure are kind of covered as part of the performance standards work for the planning board would do? To me, I think about the square footage piece to make sure that there is a cap, how many caregivers could, could. Come together and then. Operating hours, signage, light, things like this, and I, I am no expert on our current ordinance, but I. If some of those things are already covered by the existing home occupation standards, cool, if not, from my perspective, I think those are things that should be covered, is there anything?
Well, we have a list. It's safe, there's a lot in the. Document that David sent us, and really good under this, is just a few items that.
Yeah, we need a copy of some of them.
Right, yeah, but I mean, there's a lot of good in this, there's a lot of good stuff in this, it's just a few things that. I have an issue with that I wanna bounce off everybody, that, that's it, other than that, it's a good working copy. Once everybody reads it, has a chance to digest it, look at it, because again, planning board hasn't seen it.
So I, I know it's important that the planning board has seen this, would it be unreasonable to have that conversation now? Of what is, what works for everybody and what doesn't in this document, or would you rather wait for council meeting and have that conversation itself? All right, John, what, what, what do you have beef with?
I love how you put that, I'm like a negative one.
Able to present on Zoom so they can.
Oh, yeah, I can do that, yeah, good call.
I can forward it to them too.
Let me share my screen, guys, just a second.
You wanna try and do that, Jen?
I'm, I'm in the meeting, I just.
All I have is one copy, Greg.
So I'm good, I'll, I'll, I'll listen to that, I, I guess what I'm.
It'll be up on this.
Just thinking from the. Not my daily work issue, but your daily work. Are we getting ahead of ourselves here because we're gonna combine the ordinances? And then, but we're having a discussion tonight about this Spotify draft. If not, maybe three pool.
Well, this is, this is a piece that's gonna be there no matter what, it's, it's the operating requirements for the land use, so wherever it sits. That's another administrative piece.
So this section here of approval and operating requirements. This really seems to be the more like performance standard-ish. Types of things, so everything above this is all licensing that we're done with that conversation that's gonna be separate. But I, this is the, so the green is what. The green is what David added. So. We can, if we could just buzz through this and see what, what, whatever our concerns with, whether what people might wanna, might wanna nix, and then I'll take. The next step of just kind of compiling what we like, what we don't like, and stuff to, to send over to the planning board. So I know that this says in order to obtain a license pursuant to this ordinance. Just ignore that, I guess, but. Proof of ownership, is that something that is included in our minor? No, I'm just looking at the home occupation language that we already have. But this is new. And does anyone have any concerns with this?
I, I, Mallory, I have, I, I, I can't be put on the spot here reading this, I, I, that's not how I work.
Okay, um, all right, so if, if that's the case, then, well, John, you, I know there's some, some feelings that you have. If you wanna share those now.
So I, I can, and again, Bill, I fully understand where you're coming from. So if we go to D slash E. The order control. You shall not emit marijuana product odor across lot lines in such quantity that can be detectable at any point along property lines. I, I mean, where, where. I'm comparing this to other businesses, and I have to compare it to other businesses, right, when the farm does their fields, that's all I smell for three weeks or a month or more. I got it as far as neighbors. But I don't think that's realistic, that somebody standing at the property line, depending on how big the property is, could smell. It all depends on someone's sense of smell, how sensitive they are, I just think that's a problem area that. I don't like in there. Some of it's good, but I don't know how you would enforce that or how you would buy it, if I into it. J. Traffic, no traffic shall be generated by use in greater volumes than would normally be expected by a residential use. How do you define that one? Because you're gonna have more use, you have customers coming and going all day.
So it's just like that, but this language is verbatim within, in our current minor home occupation ordinance.
I, I got it, but so. The Whoopi Pie Shack on Saturday out by us does a fantastic business, they generate more than the normal, them coming home and leaving every day. It's just an area of, I don't know how we define that, do we count cars? I, I don't, I don't think.
Well, the problem with that, John. Is right now, there is a mechanism to go out there and take care of that, because the code enforcement officer could theoretically go out there. And address some of these situations out there under. The ones that argue they should be, are regulated as a home occupation theoretically.
Actually, that goes back to a. I was on the planning board at the time, and that was a conditional use application. Conditional use goes with the, goes with the land, not the owner, and it was originally approved as a convenience store.
But, but again, so what, what dictates is more than use? Mallory goes in and out of her driveway a hundred times because her kids are in sports in the play. We don't, because my kids are grown up, what, I, I just have an issue with the way that's written because.
Vaginism, true.
Yes, it, it leads us down the path.
The issue you have to watch out for is where does the registered caregiver start to have the attributes? Of a medical storefront in terms of selling on it, so there needs to be that clear line of delineation, because that's also a requirement of state law.
Agreed, and, and there needs to be something in there, it's just that's extremely vague. Excuse me, Bill, what?
Well, I just want you to list off the other things, we're not gonna resolve any of these, what other things are you concerned with?
I know that. A copy of the proposed lighting plan shall be provided with the application reviewed and approved by the code enforcement officer, fire chief, police chief, or other designees. I go with the code enforcement officer, but I don't know what the police chief, fire chief have to do with it.
Okay.
Don't, don't, don't understand that. Above it, it says must be there for safe egress and access, which I agree, but I don't know what the other two entities have to do with it. Last one would be. Q, inspections, code enforcement officer, fire chief, police chief, or their designees will inspect all caregiver establishment's priority issuance, I got no issue with that. Nothing herein shall prevent the above-named inspection officers or their designees from inspecting the facility at random intervals. Without advance notice, provided that the inspection is during approved business hours. How often do our. Inspecting officers or the designees. Visit any other business and do an inspection in this town, from drugstores to restaurants to liquor stores? I think it's just opening us up. They can go inspect if there's a complaint or whatever, but I don't think we should give them carte blanche to walk in the door whenever they want. That's it, that's all that's, other than that, I have no issue with the rest of the way this document's written, other than some admin stuff about the town clerk doing it, but that's minor. But that's the only issues I have that you guys would be working on.
Good.
I have a couple of comments just about the. The odors, I know our neighbors down in Kittery have defined odors underneath each type. But it looks like a medical marijuana registered caregiver home establishment must mitigate offensive odors such as. That they are not detectable by reasonable means at the property line. And it's just that odors must be controlled by whatever the best practices are, so they're saying like. We're acknowledging you have to, you can't, you have to do something.
Right, no, the, the best you can do, and we can't expect them to put in a caracol canister vacuum system for a hundred thousand dollars. Is what I'm getting at, I mean, it should be reasonable, and they should do the best they can, but when you drive by sweet dirt every morning, I can smell it.
Well, you want that in your neighborhood, you know, like.
Doesn't bother me, but yes, I wouldn't want it, I agree, I see that, but we gotta define it as something, and I'd be okay with it, it's just very vague.
And some surrounding communities have also kind of gated the utilities usage based on organize, based on. Residential use, so the residential electric cannot be upgraded past a certain voltage, and so perhaps that's why, like.
Women just wear a coatage.
Yeah.
That's it. So. From the land use perspective, as you're contemplating, that's one of the, when you talk about the order control. From my perspective, and again, I'm only one on that board, I'm only one. My perspective is the order control is also tied to. The square foot limitation, or perhaps lack thereof, in other words, the more folks you have operating. The, the, the larger amount of odor, and so from a residential perspective, you know. Right now, in, in, in terms of the ordinance. You know, if two or three people get together, there are family members on a piece of property in a residential zone. And constructing, which is entirely feasible, a fifteen hundred or two thousand square foot building. Just per canopy, forget about all the other, you know, minor processing that they can also do, this is more than just the canopy, there's also the processing. In a residential zone can be pretty offensive.
Without doubt, yes.
And so I think that odor control should also be tied to. A discussion of, of, to what extent that would be allowed in terms of the numbers.
Numbers.
The square footage and collective issue.
Yeah.
But I don't disagree, John, with what you're saying, and again, you know. They're allowed by state law to conduct their business, we can regulate, but we can regulate them, you know, again, as we see.
To minimize the effects of their neighbors.
Of the neighbors, and that's what I'm after.
Hundred percent, and, and again, we've given that by minimizing square footage, five thou, five hundred's gonna produce a lot less than fifty.
Yep, and so the order control is a lot less. Needed or necessary in a situation like that.
I feel like the three big things. That we need to make sure that we address to, I think you said it, Greg, to kind of. Manage the, like, potential to kind of. For one of these to approach more of like a retail store type of operation is. Well, the square footage is more from like a, an odor standpoint, but then the hours of operation, like, are we going to? Do we wanna put any limitations in there for like appointment-only pickups? You know, I think David put in here somewhere, or in, in someone's version, I saw something about.
Nine to six or eight to eight.
Not from an operating, not from an operating's, ours perspective, but like, no drive-through. You know, no drive-through pickups are doing it as an appointment-only or only during certain operating hours, I think those are the types of things that. We can put into place to help prevent this from being like a full-blown store in the middle of the residential.
It was nine to six.
Yeah, eight or nine to six, depends on which.
I took a complete flyer on that, it was all subjective.
And I think David probably took a look at our existing ordinance, I'm assuming some of the language looks familiar for home occupations for minor and major. Specifically around some of these different things around square footage, traffic, et cetera, so it sounds like. If we just kind of had a few additional items, and I don't know if it makes sense to add those into the home occupation sections or somewhere else, but to kind of cover these additional things like. Order hours of operations for.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind that the home occupation ordinance has been around a long time, minor, major. Yeah, I mean, keep in mind that the home occupation ordinance has been around a long time, minor, major, and it's sort of tested, it stood, stood the test of time. It's, if you'd step back from this, it's to allow a reasonable enterprise uh, out of one's home in a residential neighborhood. And so a, a residential neighborhood is not a commercial neighborhood, it's, it's not a commercial area. So there was a, there was a balance struck years ago on what works and what's reasonable and what's not reasonable due to protect the, uh, the, the, the abutting residences while allowing the enterprise, uh, potential of working out of your home. And we've had it back and forth, you know, cars has always been it, parking has always been it, lighting has always been it, signage has always been it. These things are, are, are real concerns with a home occupation, and, uh, I think they're the kind of things that should apply to one of these, uh, uh, registered caregivers, it, when they're in a residential zone. So it, it's all very logical to, to look at, and we should start from the home occupation side, not the commercial side.
Good point.
Yeah.
And, and, and yet, and, and recognize uh, that there are financial pressures, there will be financial pressures for people to push the boundaries over and over again. And that's why this is very important. The reason we want to have the administrative side of licensing is to put a circle around these operations uh, so that you can, you can deal with them. Right now, we don't have a way to deal with them, we don't have a way to deal with someone who's a cowboy about there or, or pushing the boundaries, except for to go to, uh, the office of marijuana policy and, and they, they, they're not going to do anything for us. So the, the ordinance, and just to sort of reiterate why we're here, is that, is so we can identify and put circles around these things. So not for the compliant people, that's going to be fine. It's, in my view, it's more for the people who are going to pushing the boundaries and try to get away with stuff because there's so much money to be made in this thing. And, and that, that, that incentive is going to be here, and I don't think we should be blind to that.
Um, so I, I guess what I suggest, unless we have any other conversation to have, is, uh, the licensing administrative ordinance, I will take ownership over Jack, and that, it's town council will take care of that. For the planning board side, I can put together kind of a formal charge for you guys incorporating some of these additional kind of pieces, um, that we've discussed, um, kind of boxes we want to make sure we take care of, um, and send, we can, um, uh, review that as a council via email and stuff, and I think we'll need to kind of vote to finalize that at our next meeting, um, and then we can get that over to the planning board and, you know, trust you guys to incorporate that however you see fit. I think the home occupation, um, route makes a ton of sense, um, and allows us to not repurpose, or, sorry.
We don't have to invent the thing.
Um.
The introduction notwithstanding, um, the town clerk makes some good points about routing.
Yes, about just like the actual paperwork process.
Yeah, yeah, I can guess the app, the code out, she returns the code out, the CEO review, blah, 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 blah. But that all makes real good sense.
Yeah. And I think, um, I don't know, I, I, I'm actually surprised that we didn't hear similar questions from Barbara when we took care of the licensing piece for, um, was she, is she on the call? Um, about the licensing sections for cultivation, storefront and cultivation and stuff. So I think that's, all of her points are super valid, and I think if we smoosh them together, we'll just want to make sure that she, everything makes sense to her from like a process perspective, um, as far as how we, um, actually execute.
Yeah, there'd be more opportunities to speak on those.
For sure, for sure. Um, okay, so Bill, if we, if the county council holds together a charge simply just for performance standard side of things, um, does that work for you guys to then take it and some other things for?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll let, uh, Hershey and, um, and, and Greg comment too, but that's, that's logical, that's what we expect.
Nope, that's good, that's exactly what should happen, I'm with the, I'm with Bill on this one.
Well, Bill, hopefully we'll have some meaningful input from you before the thirty-first of the month.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for your years of work, uh, it, it's, it's important to say that, and truly appreciate, uh, your efforts for the town.
Well, thank you, Jack, appreciate it, that's always been a huge pleasure working with you and every other councillor, so. And I'm.
Um, all right, anyone have anything else they wanted to bring up?
No, a lot of clarity, it's good, good work, meaning.
Um, all right, um, Jack, John is just reminding me to preheat my car.
She always forgets to start her car, so I wanted to let her know now it's the time to start her car.
I have something to remind me to do that, um, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was known, I just started, that was my time, like, you probably just heard.
Uh, you can let everyone know, I can start, John said it too. Um, yeah, okay, so, um, next up, that's multiple times for the sovereigns on the same page. Um, as far as the licensing administrative ordinance, I will take ownership over that and get that out to council clearly soon-ish. And, um, we will plan to have next council meeting, uh, an agenda item, which we already have this on some agenda items, like forever. Um, but we'll plan to review kind of our formal charge for the planning board to get that over to you guys early after that. And it will be just performance standards, nothing related to licensing.
Great.
All right. Thanks, everyone, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job, Mallory, thanks.